You don't have to do it all in one section. You follow me, it's different phases. So then, you know, we are strapped for money and lives. And that's something to entertain, because we basically need our roads open for the public. It's a safety factor, I think. The other items I had on here quickly. And it has to deal with abandoned homes in East Fallfield. There's quite a few. You could get down New Lynn, which is going into Coast Run. Down past the SIS farm, which is actually down past Philadelphia-Lockley substation. There's homes there, or abandoned back there. Also, some of you gentlemen that travel Houstown Road, without mentioning the homes, but there's four homes right on that road as abandoned. We have nothing in our ordinance that says that we can have to make them, or some kind of... We don't have nothing in our ordinance. I called the zoning officer today and referenced that. And we have quite a few abandoned homes in the township. And that's, once again, that's just safety factor. I'm not suggesting anything where you get people that go into these homes, that, you know, homeless people. And I'll just say, or someone Buckrun Hill, they'll have to take you around. There's roughly 20 homes in this township that's abandoned. And we have nothing in our ordinance to enforce the homeowner or the banks. Some of these places are abandoned and the banks took them over. So therefore, I would have to suggest that we go to the bank that has these homes. The other item that I'd like to bring up is group homes. All right? There's a couple of groups. One group home on Houstown Road, there's a couple of them. We have no idea where these group homes are. All right? There are some there. And, once again, I talked to the zoning officer and referenced that. And he's investigating a couple of group homes that have not even come forward to the township. They've been, I guess, neighbors complain or something like that. But if we do have group homes, and the one, the quicker one I knew that, on Houstown Road, who inspects them? Does the township inspect them? Do they have to be inspected by the state? I would think they would have to get a permit. And that's one item that the township usually issue permits for group homes. So that's something I would suggest you gentlemen look into, not only for our, you know, township, but the residents are at the group homes, for their protection. And who run these group homes in our township. Thank you.
Paula Davis?
Oh, my gosh. You know, I get them up from the people, and I hate getting them up here, that's why I sit in the back. I don't like to be up front. Anyhow, what I'm here for is concerning the recycling trash. I handed you a letter January 27th, before the meeting. I had got no response, no nothing from you, or any of yours, concerning the issue.
I passed the letter, I passed you.
You have not looked at it yet, or even acknowledged it?
I acknowledge it, I accepted it, and I handed it to the chair. You handed it to me before the meeting started?
Yes, yes.
And when the chairman came in, I put the letter to him, so...
Well, that's why I'm here tonight, without any response. So I don't want to be here from here, because at 2215 Strasburg Road, since July 8th, 213, there has been nobody in there, correct? And in, it's a recycling, on this paper it states, as everybody has gotten one on your bill, it says trash and recycling fee, 210. Then you can pay a quarterly. Okay? I've been paying it for the residents of 2215 Strasburg Road, which was my parents', the roof deceased. I've been paying it for 13, 14, and part of 15. And it's gone on 60 now. I did have trash, was cleaning it out. But since August 215, I've had none, not even a tissue. Now, on this paper, it does not say, it's an ordinance, it does not say that we go by number of houses in the township to pay the recycling and trash people. Right here, it says trash and recycling fee. Now, there's no trash, but you still got to pay it if you don't have any trash. I don't think that I should have to pay $210 for 52 a month, when that house is vacant. There's a lot of houses that are vacant in this township. And I was told, but we can't go around and know who moves in and out, who does this, who does that. Oh, yes, you can. There's five supervisors, there's a zoning officer, and there's a lot of, you can't check it? Now, do you think it's fair to pay a trash fee when there's no trash?
Are you questioning me?
Yeah, I'm looking right at you.
Sure, I see that. And I'll respond to you. The township, the way the trash is set up, and how we bid it out, is all homes are included in there. The township doesn't know whether or not someone's living at home or not. All of, what has happened here with the township is that, a couple of years ago, that policy was pierced a little bit, where the board started offering waivers. And that's one thing you can do, is you can step before the board, maybe that's what you're kind of doing right now, and is ask for a waiver of the trash fee. Because it's a little unfair for everyone else to be paying for the trash fee, because we pooled together to get that rate. And the trash companies themselves say, how many homes do you have? And that's how the process is bid out to us. As soon as we start removing homes from that, that can affect everyone's rate. And there's not really a fair policy, other than to say that everyone must pay it. Because it's really hard to tell if someone's living at home for six months, or three months, or at different times. It's not, it's very hard for the township to go around and monitor that. Even if someone was to tell us that, we would have to validate that. So that's been the policy. You can ask for a waiver, and the board can consider that waiver.
Why didn't you tell me that when I called you in 213 and 14? And I also called Joe in 213 and 14. Nobody told me about a waiver. Nobody told me about anything. But right here, does it say ordinance? Does it say anything about, whatever?
On the bill? The bill in our, go ahead.
Yeah, the bill doesn't read anything like that.
Oh, the bill doesn't mean anything? Is that what you're saying?
No, that's not what I said. I said, the bill doesn't read anything like that, as far as what you're saying there. But we, if you would like to request a waiver, we can consider it now, and let you know.
Then I should have been told that in 213 and 14, when I asked, three times.
Well, I apologize that you were not. But at this point, if you would like the waiver, we can discuss it and see if we are willing to give the waiver.
I don't think it's fair. I, all we need is common sense in this township, and it seems like a lot of people don't have it. And just as I said, that, you know, it's not fair. Now, we just got another text in the mail, which I don't mind paying my fair share if you, if it's reasonable. But if you don't have any trash, we don't have any trash. And it says trash and recycling fee. You know, that's just my gripe about it. And I came before you, and you know Joe, I called you, and I called you in 213 and 14. And you never said anything about a waiver. You never said anything about ordinance until, and then I wrote you that, and didn't hear nothing, a month.
The letter was...
I don't think there's sufficient waiver.
There's not.
There's not a waiver.
Or whatever, you just call what, you know...
Well, Joe, it's a policy the board...
We get granted exceptions, sure.
Right, yeah, right.
Like in the past, maybe like three or four.
Exactly. And we said we would take it on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, case-by-case basis. Well, I mean, it's, you could make the argument too. I mean, I live in, I'm the only full-time resident of my home. My trash is, you know, certainly a lot less than a family of six or seven.
Well, so was my parents. They had maybe no bigger, excuse me, than this had here. Right here, see it? That's how much they had, 85 and 87-year-old. And, you know, and, you know, I, you know, it's really big.
Oh, I'm just saying, I mean, for somebody, for anybody, not just me, somebody who's the only resident of a house, makes it certain.
You go around this township, and you won't see some of the trash cans.
Sure.
They're overflowing. And some had two or three.
But as Ed mentioned earlier, we, you know, we bid the trash out, we did it on the number of homes we have in East Fallfield.
Then why isn't it written on here?
Why isn't it written on there?
What it's based off of?
It's, that's a bill.
That's just a bill.
I know it's a bill. It says trash and recycling bill. And you don't have any trash.
All right, so would you, would you like us to, you know, are you asking for a waiver for this year?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
And that's all I needed in 213 and 14 to hear.
Okay. Well, I apologize if I wasn't there, but we can do it now, so I mean...
You know, I don't mind paying, I paid. And, you know, I don't mind paying, I don't even want to be here today. But I'm here because I don't like it.
Any board opinion there on the waiver, or the exception, as we've done in the past, on a case-by-case basis? Any calls for concern? Paula, are you the only homeowner of that property?
Pardon?
Are you the only owner of that property?
No, I'm not. Right here says, right on here, who's the other owner. But anyhow, I think he feels the same way, too. I'm not sure, but I...
Well, the reason why I'm saying is, as you backed it up yours, I mean, that other owner did step in, did mention to the board during...
He did mention it.
And he's been here for waivers, as well, for the waiver process as well. So it's not like the information hasn't been put out there. You might not have been here, but I don't remember you directly ever asking about, you, you know...
I wanted...
I don't remember. I don't really want to look for... Do you have the exception?
At this point, you...
I did still call you. I called you three times.
I'm not, I'm not saying you didn't call me. I don't recall you asking to put, to waive the trash.
I didn't know about a waiver. I don't, you know, I don't call...
So what's your opinion on the waiver? Carol?
Yes.
Okay. I'm for it, but the only thing is, Paula, that you would have to let the board know of some nature that, once you sell that, no, Paula, we, when the house is sold, so we can real...
I will stop soon.
Well, Paula, can you hear me out?
Yes, I'll hear you out.
All right. So the township has no way to really monitor and go back on houses down that step before us of that nature. So you have to notify us when the house is sold, or someone takes possession of that, so we know.
No, it's sold this year.
Yeah.
Well, I would simply take that responsibility to call you and tell you that if it's sold or whatever, you know, so that, you know, you can get your trash and recycling.
Sure. Okay. Then the waiver, or the exception?
They have their dumpster, you know, the trash...
The bill to...
So you would need to turn back in your dumpster cans?
Yeah, they're right up there at the house.
Okay. Tag, you would accept those back? Okay.
So if you just want to call the...
Do we need a motion?
You would, oh, we need a motion? Okay. I make a motion to give an exception to 2215 Strasburg Roads Trash Fee for the year 2016.
Second.
Are you, that's subject to notification from the homeowner upon sale of the property?
Okay.
Yes.
Subject to notification from the homeowner on sale of the property.
Second.
I appreciate that.
Questions or comments? All those in favor, aye? Wait, there's a, there's a question.
Just for rental of the property.
Or rental.
If you have for sale.
Pardon?
Or rental, if there were to be rent to go.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion, if anything, for you.
Thank you.
I got us up there.
Moving on to additional interviews for the open board supervisor seat. Again, similar to last time, we'll interview each candidate individually, and then open it up for any questions or comments from, all the questions or comments will be directed towards me, and then the board can decide if we want to ask, or the candidate that question. So we'll start here, the first person on the list, Mr. Sisk. If you could come up to the microphone, please.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for coming out tonight, showing interest in the position. I'll try to remember all the questions we asked last time, so if I forget any, somebody please try to...
I did drop off a position paper today, in order to expedite this.
Yeah, we do, yeah, we do have that. I guess just for us, you know, why are you looking to, why are you interested in the position at this time?
I believe in community service, and I demonstrated that in the township. I believe there's issues that need to be corrected, and I'm willing to jump in and do that.
What would you say the biggest issue facing the township is right now, and how would you fix it?
Right now, I see problems with the roads being closed. I also see problems with complaints about taxes, and issues like that. I don't believe the board is good on any of its functionality for residents, and that's probably the biggest problem I see.
What's, what do you mean by functionality?
I think by now, hundreds of people have seen the recent meetings, and they're pretty well discussed with the way you folks have acted. I think that's obvious.
So, okay. What's up with the functionality of the board?
I expect people to be settled. Whether you're up there or back here, I believe you should be settled in the meeting. And that hasn't been seen.
How many meetings have you watched?
One or two.
I've watched the last two, and I've been impressed with progress.
And that's, that's your opinion, that...
That is my opinion.
Majority of, or, you see the majority of meetings, not some?
I would say there's...
One or two.
There's simple behavior that's unacceptable to me, and a lot of it is on this side of the desk. You know, it's not just up there all the time, but I would say the entire room has to be under control by the chairman.
We brought up last time with the other candidates, your thoughts about possibly a fire tax?
When I buy a car, and the salesman says, hey, ma'am, we'll charge you this much for this option, this much for that, I said, I'm not interested in that. I want to know what the whole bill is. And when you start adding individual taxes, that breaks it down, and people don't understand how much they're really paying. So I'm against it.
Your thoughts about a township? Jim, would you be against that going on the ballot for the residents to go on?
Not at all.
Okay, that's, okay, yeah, thanks. Your thoughts on the township manager?
A couple of years ago, as secretary of the auditors, we brought a plan forward to not have a township manager, and have individual supervisors take charge of departments. Roadmaster, police commissioner, and office manager. The supervisors will be compensated for that, in place of having a township manager.
I read this, the four-page thing you dropped, Jim.
Yes.
Tell me more about the, your idea about regionalizing a police department.
Okay. Right now, is my belief that the police department operates as a regional police department. We go outside of the township. When we're outside the township, we're not covering the township. But we're funding it 100%. So if we go to Modena, South Coatesville, or Coatesville, we're footing the bill for police coverage in Coatesville, Modena, South Coatesville. When we leave the township, I believe we're under the command of the officer in charge in that vicinity where they are. So I think we're already operating this one. I believe if we go to that, we can save money and actually increase our coverage.
How do you, how would you feel about that?
If we incorporate Modena, South Coatesville, Coatesville Valley into the system, there's going to be more grants coming from county to state because of the low-income folks that are in those areas.
How would that, I mean, how would that, I guess, my, really what I'm getting at is, right now, we have full-time police work.
That is correct.
That provides great coverage to us already. So if we dilute that and recover another municipality as well, in addition to their officers, I don't see how we maintain the same level of service we have now. We're not a regional police department, by the way.
Your comment was that we don't dilute. If our officers leave the township, we just dilute it.
Right. What if, and the same thing goes back and forth, if they're backing somebody else, that's one thing.
That is correct.
If the city of Coatesville comes out here to back somebody up, back us up, or Valley, which is very rare.
Right.
It's the same thing, it's a mutual...
Okay, what I did in that statement, I also put in a baseline. The baseline is that we, all full-time police officers will assimilate into force. And the other caveat that I put in there was, the cost has to be 75% of the 2012 police budget. So if there's not a cost savings, we don't do it. There's no word of looking. You don't have to do it. I only believe in change if it's better. If you don't change, just change. And that's for everything.
What kind of plans would you have for infrastructure-type of improvements, you know, the plans for that in the future?
Meaning, roads, parks.
Yeah.
I think roads and parks directly affect our primary values. And I think they have to be taken care of. That's, I just want to do on that. Because everyone uses the road every day. They don't use the park every day, they don't use the police every day, they don't use the office staff every day. But they do use the roads.
Jim, is there anything that you've seen, you know, the perfect example is what Alan brought before the board, and something that I've watched Wes Crapper, I admire a lot of things like Wes Crapper. Is there something that you've seen other municipalities do, that you wish that these fellow people would do, or would incorporate?
I'd like cooperation among entities. And in that, a couple weeks ago, the zoning planning commissioner, whatever they're called, mentioned a street sweeper, purchased that for a half a million dollars because of some issue that the DDP or DER had. Why do we have to buy one when we can get a contract with Coatesville that has one, and use it for how many hours we need it? Theirs isn't running 24 hours a day. And then I mentioned South Coatesville. We should investigate whether they can pick our trash up. If it can be done as good a job as we get now, and cheaper, do it. If not, don't do it.
Any other questions for the board? Any questions or comments from the public at this point, for this candidate?
I just want to say, I like your views.
Can you please stand up and identify yourself?
I'm wonderful, I live on Buckrun Road, and I have to say that I admire his courage to come up and give his views, and it took courage to get in front of the attitudes up there, but thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Sisk.
Thank you.
Linda Sardowski?
I just wanted to say...
You can go in front, please.
I won't be there long. After seeing, I have to agree 100% with Jim, that after seeing the attitudes coming off of you to all of us out here, I withdraw. I really don't want to be a part of this, thank you. And they continue. I know, I've never seen such condescension. And I don't know if you realize that that's what you're putting out. Your expressions, your body language, your responses are very, very inflammatory. So Jim, I agree.
Linda, would you reconsider just a, I'd be interested in hearing, hearing what your positions, I'm interested. If you, if you took the time to come out tonight's meeting, I'd be, I'd appreciate if you do. Thank you. I mean, originally, why, did you, you know, want to throw your hat in for this position?
Five years ago, I moved to East Fallfield, and I absolutely adore it. I love it. I think there's probably no better place to live. And I thought it would be nice to give something back, and do something for East Fallfield, and keep it such a beautiful, beautiful place.
Yeah. The option of possibly putting a fire tax on the ballot, would...
A fire tax?
Yeah, to put on the, during the election, for the referendum, for the citizens to vote on the possibility of a fire tax to cover our costs.
I think that would be essential.
What would your views be on need or hiring a township manager to run the day-to-day operations?
I'd have to look into it more, but at face value, I don't think it's necessary. I think we're too small municipality to require that level of commitment.
What do you feel the biggest issue facing the township today is, and how would you feel about it?
Well, I think there's several issues. I think that, I agree, there's, the roads are important. I've seen a lot of damage on the roads, it's been a rough few years. I've also seen a problem with, I think the township roads could be a little safer. If you've gone down to check your mail on some of these roads, it's pretty hazardous. I know in Buckrun, when you go out to get the mail, those cars are going 55, 60 miles an hour. And if they're big enough to sway my body in the breeze, they're going pretty fast. So I think that's dangerous. There's animals on the roads, deer, dogs, children, cows. It's pretty dangerous up and down these roads. I'd like to see that the environment is preserved, make sure that we keep it clean, keep it green, prevent the approachment of all that industrialization. I think that's probably the biggest one right now. I'm sure there's more.
The road improvements, what kind of plans would you have for infrastructure-type improvements and improving the roads, as we talked about?
Well, I think we'd have to look at, because I know that there's a lot, roads are very expensive. So I can't believe, I would like to look into how we could get funding for the roads, start to identify which roads need to be repaired. I know I've been down roads, and I didn't even realize they were roads, I thought it was a city's driveway. So that can't be good for the residents. I mean, what happens if the marge has to come in there, and the police, or what happens? There's a big hole there, you can't get through.
Questions from the board here? Looks like you have a really diverse background in technology, and...
I do.
Do you, do you see any ways that we can possibly improve the township, technology-wise? Is there something that you would recommend?
Well, after looking at the, I haven't seen enough to know. I mean, sure, there's, I'm sure there's ways we can improve it from a communications point of view. Because I know that there's probably, everybody has even have the texting, there must be something to be done that way.
Is there anything that, same as I asked Mr. Sisk, is there anything that you see in other municipalities that you wish East Fallfield had, as you, like any of the surrounding ones, that you wish would maybe be incorporated here?
Um, no, I'm not that impressed with the surrounding areas. East Fallfield, it's the best Fallfield out there.
So, or Carol?
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from people in the audience?
Great shirt, bright up there.
All right, thank you very much.
Oliver win Saller, how's the selection be made for the replacement? Who votes on that, or who makes this, who selects the candidate? Selects the person who will be the supervisor?
Once we are finished interviewing everybody, we'll take a vote on, start with one candidate, and if there's at least three votes, then that person will be, fill that position. If it does, if we're not able to vote any candidate through, and it's all 2-2, though within the next 15 days, we have to have another meeting with a person who's on the vacancy board, and make a, do another vote there to try and get a tiebreaker on one candidate.
If it doesn't go through at that level, after that 15 days, then it's turned over to the courts. Correct? Yes. And the judge votes.
I wonder if the courts get a hold, what will that?
State your name, please, if you have a question.
Thomas Nash. If the courts, once, if it does go to the courts, how does that procedure work?
It depends on the gentleman. She goes to the president judge, and she will usually hold a brief hearing, accept any position states from anyone in the making decision.
Before you go too far, Oliver, again, what's the timeline from now? I realize there are different steps here. And it's going all the way to the judge, is that like a three or four-month thing?
No.
Step one is like maybe 30 to 40 days?
We have until Thursday to vote as a board, and 15 days after that to vote with the vacancy board. And then, I don't know how long the judge presses.
And then, I don't know how long the judge presses, or how long. How long the judge takes at that point, if it gets that far. Hopefully, we won't get that far. Next candidate, Wilson Lambert, please come up front. Thank you for coming out this evening, appreciate it. And just start with, you know, why you decided to put your name in for this open position at this time.
Well.